I think we're gonna have to bring in entertainment, to bring people in.
I think that means it is now 6:00 PM on Tuesday, August 13th, 2024, and the Citrus Heights Planning Commission meeting has been called to order. Commissioner Nelson, can you lead us in the flag salute? Alrighty, thank you. Secretary, next item.
Roll call, Commissioner Flowers.
Present.
Commissioner Nelson.
Present.
Commissioner Rimmick.
Present.
Commissioner Sheeler.
Present.
Commissioner Van Duker.
Present.
Vice Chair Shisco.
Present.
Chair Price.
Present.
Thank you.
Next item.
Approval of minutes for May 22nd, 2024.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I had a mo- a motion made by Shisco and second by... Oh. Motion made by Sheeler, second made by Shisco. Yeah, I like it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item.
Public comment. Under Government Code 54954.3, members of the audience may address the commission on any agenda item within the jurisdiction of the commission or on any agenda item. Those wishing to speak on non-agenda items will be called upon at the beginning of the meeting. Those wishing... Sorry, oops. Wishing to speak against an agenda item will be called upon after the presentation by the City Planning Division and the applicant for that agenda item.
Are there any non-agenda speakers?
No speaker cards, ma'am.
Next item.
That is gonna be Item 5A, Public Hearing, 2024 Planning Code Update. The Planning Division requests Planning Commission to review attached proposed zoning code amendments. The proposed attachments include changes to various chapters of the zoning clo- code, including clarification, rec- reorganization of sections pertaining to recycling, parking, alcohol beverage sales, and convenience stores. The Planning Commission's decision will be forwarded to the City Council for final action. Project Planner Stephanie Louie.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Stephanie Louie, and I'm here with Allison Bermudas from the Planning Division. And tonight, we are gonna go over a presentation of the zoning code updates for 2024. So just as a brief overview, just, we're gonna kind of explain the general plan and the zoning code. The general plan provides broad goals, objectives, policies, and actions which are intended to guide the city's future development. The zoning code implements the general plan by outlining allowable intensity of land uses and list permitted and conditional uses in each zone. The zoning code regulates building design, setbacks, height, landscaping, tree preservation, signs, parking, among other things. So the City Council adopts the general plan, and the zoning code implements those goals and policies. The Planning Commission's role is to review the zoning ordinance to ensure that it is compatible with the general plan. Tonight, we are discussing the zoning code update. This is reviewed yearly to address any updates for compliance with state law and other factors, including economic development and adopted strategic goals. This provides an opportunity to revise sections as necessary to clarify, creating a more user-friendly document. Planning Commission reviews the proposed ordinances and amendments and forwards a recommendation to the City Council. So among the changes that were made this year, some notable changes that we'll be going over today include the following sections. Those are parking, accessory dwelling units, recycling facilities, alcoholic beverage sales, and convenience stores. So for the parking and loading section, we didn't add any new regulations to this. It was mainly just a restructuring and unbundling of the parking and loading standards. This was to provide clarity and ensure the code is easier to navigate. We included a list of acceptable parking surfaces, which code enforcement currently uses and has referenced. This is also referenced by planning, so the addition of this list is just to make sure that planning and code enforcement are consistent throughout our agencies. So at your chair tonight, you received changes to this section based on comments from Commissioner Sheeler. These changes were mostly grammatical. And for accessory dwelling units, a short item, we added some standards for setbacks for ADUs proposing a second-story balcony. This setback distance is 10 feet from the side and rear lot line. This is consistent with the current standards for a second-story addition. I'm gonna pass it over to Ally to go over the next couple items.
Thank you, Stephanie. The next item that's being proposed in the zoning code update is in regard to recycling facilities. And as you know, the past couple years, the City Council has taken strong efforts and made strong strides in improving blight within the city. So there's, they adopt yearly strategic goals towards their efforts. So the past couple years, they've done things like, well, we created a beautification team. You've probably seen them driving around in the, in the truck. There's three full-time staff members that, really, their responsibility is to drive throughout the city, pick up trash, garbage, loose shopping carts, really, in those reducing blight efforts. So it's been a great success. It's an award-winning team. It's an award-winning program, so we're very proud of that beautification team. That all came out from a strategic goal from the City Council. Also, a couple years ago, we adopted a shopping cart ordinance, and that is a regulatory agreement that the retailers who have shopping carts have entered into, and it's efforts to ensure that they're keeping their carts onsite in their own property. They're expensive, we don't want them wandering off, they don't wanna lose them. So it's just our way of working with them to ensure the copying, the shopping carts stay onsite. And for those that wander off from the retailer property, a way to work with the people that have those carts, to return them to their home and try to discourage the use of those shopping carts leaving, of leaving the site and by used, and used by others. So those are two significant steps that we've made in reducing blight throughout the city. The most recent year, the City Council wanted to continue its efforts in blight reduction. And so their strategic goal this year was, in quotes, "And responsive to ongoing blight and illicit behavior associated with recycling centers, assess regulatory options to address negative impacts." So that was tasked with the Planning Division, so we've been doing that over the past few weeks towards this goal. And so we've reviewed a variety of existing ways that the centers are operating and to achieve this goal and reduce the impacts. But really, when we were assigned this task to review recycling centers, we said, okay, what really are the issues? What are we seeing? Are these actual issues? Are they perceived perceptions? Really, you know, what was happening? And so we hired a firm who videoed the recycling centers for a minimum of six days for 24 hours. So each center was under camera. And so then we, as staff, reviewed those videos to see what was happening, what was happening during the day when they were open, what was happening when they were closed, and kind of get a feel for what was this activity that was the concern. We also did review policies and permitting processes of our other jurisdictions around us to see what they were doing, what they were experiencing. Some of the observations that we saw throughout watching the videos, the centers are very busy, much busier than I think any of us expected. They work hard, they had a lot of customers from open to close. Many of the customers using the centers were families. The sites were kept clean, but they just still were not visually appealing. Parking at some of the smaller sites were an issue. We saw a lot of safety issues and concerns, especially the ones that were on smaller sites next to an existing retail store. So you had customer activity using the recycler, you had customers going to the store, and you had trucks coming to the recycler to pick up their goods that go back to the main service center. And so if all three of those occurrences were at one time, the site got pretty, pretty busy, and there was some safety concern. Each morning, customers were seen waiting for the centers to open, almost every day. They were hanging out, loitering at the centers before they opened, assumably, to use their service and recycle goods. The sites did provide trash bins for customers. Generally, when you're taking recyclers back, you're taking it back in a plastic bag, so when you empty it into their cans, you have leftover waste. The centers were seeing, you know, providing good, safe containers for people to dispose of trash. Many customers were observed dumping their liquids from their containers onto the ground, so into the parking lot or in the surroundings. Certain centers had a higher volume of customer traffic that didn't come by car, so they were coming by foot, coming by bike, or some other method, but it was some differences, drastic differences between different centers. And then loitering and activity, you know, not necessarily during the day at the centers when they were open, when there was staff there, but in the surrounding areas around the centers. We have the police department on, you know, what were they seeing in their calls for service? So they provided kind of an overview of calls that they get in areas surrounding recycling centers. And this talks about, gives percentages of calls for camping, loitering, panhandling, and, and what they call their reporting districts. And just to give you an idea, a reporting district is a geographical area that they use for their statistics, and there's over 100 of them in the city, so they're generally small geographic type areas. So you can see in these districts that have a recycling center, they had some significant number of calls regarding those topics. Shopping carts were also routinely picked up adjacent to and near the recycling centers, so they would often be found, you know, maybe not at the center, but within its vicinity. And I want to note that these calls also do include proactive calls. So we have two officers that are assigned to the blight reduction team as well, and so they go out, and if they see someone pushing a cart down the street full of goods, they will stop, talk to that person, find out where they're going, oh, they're going to the recycling center, why are you leaving the cart? Well, they won't take my goods from the, from the cart, that's the center's policy, so they leave the cart abandoned down the street. So some of those proactive interactions are also part of that percentage. So while the numbers are hard to assess, you know, they are really are attributed to the recycling center, just kind of gives you a feel for activity, you know, in and around where the centers, where the recycling centers are located. Obviously, recycling has a great number of benefits. It's environmentally responsible, it provides a citizen's ability to, you know, retrieve their CRV value. That's the redemption price you pay when you purchase that beverage at point of sale, and the containers you're charged five cents, 10 cents, or whatever it might be, per container. It does provide you an opportunity to get those funds back. It reduces product that goes to the landfill, allows business opportunity and ownership with, you know, some significant low investment, provides jobs, and as noted, could be a family activity. But there still are concerns with recycling centers. As noted, the smaller centers specifically are very congested. They did, were showing impacts to adjacent businesses in the surroundings. Illicit activity occurs not necessarily when the center is open, but after hours. Sometimes they're in tucked-away corners, and they're in areas that maybe they aren't well-lit, and so activity occurs around those centers after hours. And then the carts in the vicinity of the recycling centers. So with all that consideration, the council strategic goal, staff reviewed a number of topics, reviewed videos, reviewed zoning jurisdictions, looked at the number of centers we have, we have four, and based upon our population, that's considerably more per capita than any other jurisdiction. Some jurisdictions don't have any, and so for our small, small 14-square-mile, 88,000 population, four is quite high. So in an effort to continue to reduce blight, which is our strategic goal, and revitalize the commercial corridors, which is a goal of the general plan, their proposal is to remove small recycling centers from the zoning code as an available land use. So what that would mean is no new centers would be able to locate here. It would not impact the existing centers, they could remain in operation. There's not anything to have them close, move, relocate, they could remain as-is, but just no new centers would be allowed as we remove it from the zoning code. I also want to mention that the operators have been very cooperative throughout this process. We have been communicate, in communication. As a matter of fact, a meeting with, for the four operators on Thursday, as we continue to work with them specifically on what's happening at their site, what we can do to address their concerns, to improve their visibility and how they look in the city. So we appreciate their work and those efforts as we continue to improve. So we see this as a way to kind of, to not have any new centers, let us work with the four, they're in operation, reduce the activity that's happening, not only to them, but in the surroundings, and to move forward, and so they can continue to work, and then we can address this, maybe in the future, maybe alternatives. There is options coming down the future of different types of recycling options, maybe they won't be containers in the middle of a parking lot, maybe they'll be in, in a building, maybe there'll be a machine, different types of things that are, you know, I think in the future, or we can come back and address it later. Alright, the next topic. Alcoholic beverages is another proposal. Do you have more questions?
Well, can I ask a question before we go through all of them?
Yeah, yeah.
How, the fact that, you know, that we're considering not having any new additional centers, we have this letter basically talking about that as of 20, January 2025, Citrus Heights will require, maybe that should be, will be required, three new certified redemption centers. So how, how does that jibe with, that is poss- the possibility of having no new centers? I don't understand.
Well, if that legislation comes down, or we get told that, we will cross that, I think, when it happens. Laws change all the time, there's all kinds of bills out there for different things, so I think we just would cross that if it happens.
Commissioner Sheeler, I can maybe add, the letter here does say, three new centers, but there are different options that they can do, they, the businesses themselves could take that, they, recycling service provider, there's different options for them to pursue other than us being responsible to permit them from a zoning regulation perspective.
Except the letter says, I mean, I don't know anything about this legislation, but the, the letter says across, if they opt to pay, the ops, that option goes away effective January 1st.
The option to buy out goes away on the first, but the, they can still, you can still bring your cans into Costco or Walmart after that fact, if that's, if that's what happens, but the buyout provision is what goes away.
Okay.
Okay, so alcoholic beverage is another proposed amendment in the code. I think I'll just talk through this and then see if I can make it clear, because it gets confusing. But alcoholic beverages is regulated, is a highly regulated sales. It's really regulated by the state, the Department of Alcohol Beverage Control, ABC. The city also plays a role in that in two occasions. One, the Planning Commission, you have a role in that when a business proposes to come here that's gonna sell alcohol and meet certain requirements, they need what, the use permit, which are familiar with that process. And then in addition, if ABC sets the number of licenses that may be in a community, they base that on a calculation factor on population. And so if ABC has said, this area of Citrus Heights, you can only have three liquor licenses, and we get an application, and they receive an application for that area, it's not necessarily a no, but they, that owner, that proposed business has to come to the city and process what's called a letter of public convenience and necessity, reference, it is a PCN, and that's a city council action. So if somebody is applying to sell liquor in a location that's considered what ABC calls over-concentrated, then they have to file a PCN application with us, we take it to City Council, and they have to grant that license. So in many occasions, if you have a new retailer coming in, they're gonna have to get a use permit because they're a convenience store open past a certain time, and they wanna sell alcohol, so they need the use permit from the Planning Commission. They have to work with ABC for their liquor license, and then they may have to also go to City Council for the letter of public convenience and necessity, and all three have to be positive in order for that business to operate. So you can see, the regulations get pretty burdensome, as long as, as well as time that's invested in that process, and obviously, money on each of those applications has a pretty good filing fee with it. Use permit itself is about $9,000, the PCN process is a couple thousand dollars, and so on top of what they paid ABC. So most retails outlets here in Citrus Heights that wanna sell alcohol have at least two or three, have at least two of those actions, they would at least generally need a PCN, and, or excuse me, an use permit and the liquor license, as well as many times they need all three. So a way to kind of advance economic development, have new businesses come in with less regulations, but still really have oversight in that process. We kind of looked at it from a lens, okay, what can we do to continue to regulate these businesses, ensure that we're protecting the community, but reduce those burdens of that permitting and time process? So we are, part of the code on the use permit process is a distance separation, so if you're gonna sell alcohol, you can't be within 500 feet of a school or a church, medical facility, and a little laundry list of items, and that's a flat out. If you're within that distance, then you, it's a flat no, right? Well, sometimes that distance is not appropriate, right? It's across Greenback Lane, or it's across Sunrise, and even maybe within 500 feet, but geographically or physically, they're not really that close. So we're proposing to remove that restriction and remove that distance separation for two things. One is, in most census tracts, or most areas in the city, we're over-concentrated, especially in our commercial areas, are all over-concentrated. So that application for the liquor license with ABC would have to go to the City Council for them to grant that license, so that may be the more appropriate time for the City Council to look at it and say, is this an appropriate location? Is this really a public convenience and necessity for this license to be issued? Instead of having the applicant come here for the use permit, go through that process, and then go to the City Council, and then go back to ABC. So we are proposing to remove that distance separation and let that fall to ABC, they have, they have regulations for distances too, and then let the City Council make that decision if, if the locations should sell, sell alcohol. And then the use permit process, we still want that, there are some business activities that we really want to know what their business operation plan is, what their security plan is, where they're located, what they're selling, but really, it gets concerning in the late-night hours. So if you remember, a couple years ago, we amended the code to allow alcohol sales without a use permit at a brew pub or tavern, because that was a business activity or business use that we were encouraging, we wanted more of that activity. So we removed that use permit for those type of businesses. So as we're doing on this, we're proposing to also extend that hour restriction to, to allow it for convenience stores too. So if you're gonna wanna come in and open a store, a little convenience store, and you're not gonna be open past 10 o'clock, you're not gonna be open past 11 o'clock on the weekends, you don't, you would not need that use permit, even if you're selling alcohol, because that alcohol's gonna be regulated through that PCN process with ABC. So that's, that is the proposal on ABC, we feel that, on alcoholic beverages, we feel that we're still having some control on their location and their concentration levels through that PCN process, and then removing that use permit, that $9,000 permit, if they're gonna fall within those operating hours. Okay, so tonight, we've presented you an overview of the proposed changes, some very minor, some have more significant discussion. We have members of the public here to discuss some of the topics, we'll listen to their questions, take, you'll take their comments, and then we can come back and re, and discuss that. As Stephanie mentioned, this is a review and a recommendation, so we will take your recommendation to the City Council, who actually will have the final say. That recommendation will go to them probably September sometime, expected to be maybe September 11th, first or second meeting of September, and they will be the final decision-makers on anything that we take forward. I think that concludes it, so let us know if you have any questions now. Oh, I did, let me go back. As Katie, or as Chair, Commissioner Sheeler mentioned, we did receive a letter today from a gentleman on the recycling, I put that at your chair. Also, on your chair, I put a letter from Sunrise Marketplace, who was speaking in favor of the change, the alcohol amendments.
Alrighty, thank you. Any clarifying questions from my fellow commissioners? See, seeing no others, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing.
We do have speakers.
Alright, can I have John Brecker? Please.
Hi, everybody, my name's John Brescher, I'm a local commercial real estate broker. I work with a lot of shopping center owners and tenants of shopping centers in the city of Citrus Heights. I am here to show my support for the change to the alcoholic beverage sales. I think that the city has done a great job with the beautification of the commercial corridors, but there's still a pretty significant amount of vacancy in the shopping centers in the city of Citrus Heights. I think having the existing restrictions is sufficient to help kind of police, if you will, the sale of alcoholic beverages, and so these additional restrictions, I feel like being removed, is it gonna be a, a benefit in helping at least get some of these storefronts filled that, you know, have, have been vacant for a long time? So that's why I'm here, so thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Oh, I'm gonna slaughter it, is it Jacey? Yes, Jacey Levitt.
Well, good evening. Ivan and I are owners of Ivan's Recycling at Summer Hill Plaza, and I'd like to greatly thank the Planning Commission for recommending that we stay open, that business is our livelihood and has significantly changed our, how our family lives for the past seven years, and we're super grateful for it. But I am in opposition to the proposed ban for expansion of recycling centers, not only for traditional centers, but I wanna make sure that there's room for growth in other ways. We are still in the stone age with recycling centers, it's crazy that, you know, we had 113-degree day and we're outside working in a container, but that's how it is currently. We are recipients of a pilot grant from California to open a state-of-the-art technology-driven We are recipients of a pilot grant from California to open a state-of-the-art, technology-driven indoor location in Fair Oaks, which we're really excited about, but would be completely impossible with today's financial model without the grant. But we are currently working on a secondary grant and hopeful to introduce it to Citrus Heights. So seeing the ban kind of worries us that the potential for that would go away. But the model would be like a bag drop, so it would be cashless, unmanned. You wouldn't have to worry about maybe, you know, the transient coming with a shopping cart full of containers to recycle. It would be someone that's getting paid electronically a couple of days later. So those people that are really in need of money are going to use the traditional center. But I'm getting off topic. I made slides. I haven't done a PowerPoint in years. But I think that recycling centers do offer some great services to the community. I can't tell you how many times a day we're thanked by residents of Citrus Heights that were there for them. They're forced to pay the deposit, so they should have convenience to get that back. Decreases landfill. I mean, even those transients, you know, going around picking it up off the ground is kind of part of the beautification process in a way. And as the letter stated and you were asking, so effective 2025 January, stores will no longer be able to pay that opt-out fee. They will have to take back in-store and that is the last thing that grocers want to do. In their eyes, it's bringing trash into their store and they're completely opposed to it, which makes sense. And so after that, they're going to be searching for options, whether it be the bag drop or a traditional center or whatever it may be, they're going to be looking for those options. And so a ban would take that away from them and they'd have no choice but to take back in-store or risk being fined by the state. And then there's, oh, I ran out of time. Oh, you're sweet. And then the funding consequences, of course, which I'm sure you guys know about. It's in the Public Resource Code that states that if there does become a ban on recycling centers from having that option to serve at a site with a supermarket, that the city will no longer be eligible for that funding through the state, which can be a great benefit, especially for the beautification process, to have those funds and available grants. So I wouldn't want the city to miss out on that. I kind of went over this, just kind of talking about our stone age model and the idea of kind of improving and bringing other options. And with the grant application we have in currently, this is the model we're proposing, putting up the food max on Sunrise. And we have gotten, you know, approval from the landlord for that if it does go through. But innovation. Thank you, guys.
Alright, those were the only speaker cards I have. Any other speakers?
No other speakers.
Then I'm going to close the public hearing. And before moving to a motion, I just want to ask again, do any of my fellow commissioners have any final thoughts or questions?
Yes, I do have questions. Thank you for coming back to me. I apologize for, I just saw the email this morning of the agenda coming through and I was able to just review it today, so didn't have time to get back to you with some of the questions I have. Forgive me for some of my ignorance here. Regarding the parking restrictions, I'm looking through some of the texts here. I just want to understand like where this is coming from. Is this an issue that we're having? Like there's a new text here. This is, on the bottom, there's 3-86F where it says there's no, no front or side setback can be used for storage of vehicles and, and you know, there's a list there. Where's the, are we having issues with that, that we're currently seeing, that we're trying to address this?
So that is actually, it's already existing in our code. We just moved it to a separate section. So that portion of the code is actually within, it's in storage, which is in a, it's in another section, but it's also in the parking section as well. Yeah, we just reorganized that. The only thing that was added to the parking section was the list of acceptable parking surfaces. Everything else was restructured. So we broke it down from different paragraphs, restructured it to kind of make it easier to outline required parking standards and then additional parking standards.
Okay. I also had a question on that as far as the surface of the parking. I'm reading through it here where it basically says that temporary overnight parking is required only on approved paved driveway. So is, in essence, does that mean you can't drive your car onto your front lawn and just park it there? Is there a reason why we're not allowing to do that?
Yeah, so it's, parking is only allowed on acceptable parking surfaces. We do have requirements for parking with the 50% requirement. But yeah, in approved parking surface, we don't allow for cars to be on grass.
And like this particular thing, is that, was that, you know, this is completely new to the, to the code essentially? Or did we already have it before?
So we always didn't allow for people to park on grass surfaces. This was, the list was referenced by code enforcement. It's a list that's found on our website with the FAQs. We just never had it in our zoning code, but it is something that code enforcement enforces. It's that list of acceptable parking surfaces. We just wanted to make it consistent.
Gotcha. I think I have a few more. Yes, towards the end of the package, when we're talking about ADUs, we have some of the highlighted texts about where it says here, "Location: A residential accessory structure may be located between a primary dwelling and a street only with a design review approval." So first question is specifically, it says here, "Residential accessory structure." Is that, could that be the dwelling unit, ADU, or is that some kind of shed or, and all of the above essentially?
So accessory structure is defined in our definitions, but it includes, it's detached accessory structures. So that would be like garage, detached garages, detached sheds. It does not include the residence and it does not include ADUs.
Okay, okay. And then "Design Review," only with the "Design Review," what does, what does that process look like?
So that was also existing in the code. We just added the section regarding if there's the developments, is that the sentence right before that or the section right before that? But basically if someone wants to add a structure that's in the front yard, it would require a design review, it may require a design review, which is just a review from the planning division.
So just to clarify further on that question, I remember a while back, we voted on, and we were changing from objective standards to more, sorry, from subjective to objective. So does that, "Design Review," does that, I guess, have, are there certain standards that are public that somebody can just pay checks the boxes here? Or is this based on someone's opinion?
They're, they're subjective. They're, we have design criteria in there. So if they're filing, if they're going to propose an accessory structure, a shed or something in the front of their home or it's visible from the street, we just want to make sure it's compatible. That's the big thing that we would look at, that it's made of similar materials to the home, you know, where it matches the house or blends in with the house. We've had occasion where someone wants to put up a metal garage, a metal storage building on the front of their property, in front of their house, in front of their stucco house. It has caused the neighborhood issues in the past and concerns because it's really not compatible. It changes the look and feel of the neighborhood. So if someone's proposing it to be in the front, if it's in the back, doesn't matter. But if it's visible in front of the house, we just want to look at it for compatibility.
Gotcha, okay. And when something goes to a "Design Review," are there typically extra fees associated with that?
Those would be just be done through the building permit process. So when they file their permit, we just look at it. Their permit includes an elevation plan, you know, what it's going to look like, and we look at the materials and just compare. There's no separate application fee.
That's not like a public hearing?
Not a public hearing.
Okay.
No.
Okay. I think that is all I had. So thank you.
I have a question. Allison, can you speak to the grant that Ms. Levitt was referring to?
Sure. So the city does receive some funding from CalRecycle for a variety of things that we use, general service funds. And so no, not having additional recycling centers are changing. I'm not sure how that's going to impact it, but we could lose some of that grant funding. I know when we apply for grants, sometimes it asks a question. But that has not been, that is not a concern at this time. So that's what, from the city grant. And I think what J.C. was referring to was a grant that they've applied for. They've received one grant already that they're working through the indoor center in Fair Oaks that's helping them open an indoor recycling center. And then they have filed for a second grant that they're hoping to receive that would provide another alternative, that photo that she had in her slide presentation for a future grant that they would receive to help them get those up and running.
As far as the city's concerned, are we talking about, is it a substantial grant?
This for the city's funds?
I would say that's something the council will have to consider at this point.
Okay. Just curious on that, but alright.
I am curious if the proposed changes to the recycling center or centers in the city will still allow the existing centers to move within the city?
I don't.
Generally, no.
No, that they would not be able to move with the way regulations. There'd be existing non-conforming uses which are restricted to the location they're at. There might be ability for them to change a little bit, but there are some restrictions in the code that limit that.
Okay. I'd be curious personally if we could recommend that that be allowed, that the four existing centers can be allowed to move and change. Like for instance, if they want to do the bag drop model as opposed to the traditional?
And I'd like to just piggyback on that really quick too, is with an additional question, are they allowed to expand? I don't know how the footprint's regulated for that.
Yeah, they are, and right now they're limited to 400 square feet. And I think they're all, all, all are already at that limit. So their expansion, whether it be footprint or additional services, would not be allowed. That's our typical standard for non, what they have become, what we call non-conforming, is they couldn't relocate, they couldn't expand.
I would just add, you know, we're pretty good at adapting as technology changes, you know, and it sounds like some of this stuff that they mentioned is in its infancy. If we saw that this is, the wave's coming, we're back in the, maybe we're in the 20th century, maybe that we would be broach that subject at that time and say, hey, here's a new cool idea. We think this will work better. That's something that I would recommend we consider later on. There are other, some other components to citing them that would be of concern related to what CalRecycle requires and proximity and things like that.
Okay, and so this really is just kind of a temporary ban while we figure out what is best?
Yeah, I think it's, we, we as staff believe we have more than our fair share of these in the city. We have some of our nearby agencies don't have any of them. So are we taking their share of recycling? Is that fair for us to deal with the externalities that come along with them? So I think as, you know, things change, we adapt and that's something we can, can take up later on. But it's not, there's no set timeline or anything at that point, at this point.
On that note, as far as what some of the other agencies around us are doing, do they, do we look at, like do they, do some of the cities that are, I guess, are typically, we would look at, they're pretty clean, like for example, Roseville, do they have any bans or something similar to this?
There's a lot of variability on what other cities do or don't do. I think real estate price is a factor. We do have lower general real estate commercial lease prices. So I think that's probably a major driver as compared to some of the surrounding agencies. I think, my understanding, and Ali could be wrong, no one else has outright banned them, but some agencies have different rules that they apply and different review processes that may impact their ability to be feasible.
Yeah, some of them, their permit fees are, you know, very high and their standards are very difficult. So while on paper it looks like they're allowed, they really have standards in place that are unobtainable. While that's a good paper exercise, I would rather not have it, not go through that exercise to get to that same result and just not have it in the code and allowed. And then allow time, allow technology to come forward. J.C. and her team are very up on that. They're working with CalRecycle. And as things change and come forward, that we would have the opportunity to bring something back to you. It's why we do kind of this code update every year, every 18 months, is because things do change. And so it would really kind of put a halt on things now and let it regroup.
Just for clarification then, so if we did not approve this tonight and tomorrow an applicant comes in with a recycling center and all the boxes are marked, makes all the marks, it would then have to be approved, correct?
Correct.
We wouldn't at that point be able to say, oh no, we don't want more?
Correct.
Okay. But if we do pass this tonight and we decide that there's something great out there that our city needs, we can amend this later. Thank you.
Allison, I just had another question. Is there a, are these, I'm just, I'm sorry, I just don't know enough about the recycling centers to know this, but are they treated just like any other business, generating revenue for the city in some respect in terms of taxes? Or are they exempt from that or?
They don't contribute taxes to us. They're more of a service. I had this figured out at one time, as like you, I've learned a lot about recycling. They, they're not contributing anything to us through sales tax. But it's more on the, you as a community, a consumer, your ability to get your deposit back. So when you buy a beverage good and you're paying your nickel, it's your ability to get your nickel back. The sales tax to us comes from the point of sale when that beverage was purchased, not necessarily when it's redeemed for the recycle.
So are these 400 square foot lots given to them to operate on or?
No, they're, they lease them from the property owner.
Okay, so it's a lease agreement.
And as Casey mentioned, that probably why we have a higher number than a lot of places is our rents are assumably a little bit cheaper. We have a lot more land available, empty spaces. And so landlords, you know, they'll take the revenue. You want to rent space, 400 square feet for a container, you know, then, then it's available. And so that is one reason why they're probably more here than you would see in other areas. For example, Folsom has none, Rockland has none.
Thank you, Allison.
I want to, I want a clarification on something. The question that was asked, if we pass this tonight and on the screen it says, "Make recommendation to forward to the city council." So are?
Yeah, let me clarify that. So your, your action tonight is a recommendation. So ultimately it would go to city council. So city council's determination would be the final action. And so also it's 30 days after that that it would go into effect. So your decision tonight, let's say it goes to city council September 11th. It takes two trips to the city council, let's say, on their agenda. So it's about 30, 45 days following that action before it goes into effect. So this is August. So we're probably have till almost November before it would really be into effect.
Okay. And so I guess what we're really saying, I hear all this, that, you know, for now, we don't want any more of sort of what we already got. We think we sort of have enough. And we're hopeful that technology in whatever form will improve both the look and the, lessen the impact of these type of will improve both the look and the, lessen the impact of these type of operations. That they are desired in terms of the environment, their desire to be able to recoup the recycling cost of the, of the containers. But, so, so our recommendation would be something along that line, that we're gonna, we would like to basically put this in abeyance, no more right now. We're hopeful that technology will improve, and we can revisit this issue, hopefully then, and make another recommendation as to where we wanna go from there.
I think that's a great assumption.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I just wanna add to, you know, whatever happens tonight, we are aware of some of the challenges that come with our four existing ones, and that's something that Allison's team's working on, and gonna meet with them and look at opportunities to improve the ones we have, which I think is a, is a pretty big step, and it may take some, some doing to get them to be a little bit cleaner and deal with some of those problems. So, that's gonna be ongoing in tandem. So, I think that's kind of gives us a little breathing room to figure that out and then see how technology progresses, and then we can kind of revisit it.
A lot of good discussion, thank you. Yeah?
So, back in the 70s, I remember going to the grocery store with my parents, and they'd bring the bottles and cans there. Now, part of the letter here is indicating that a moratorium is going to end on their ability to opt out on January 1st. Have there been talks with the large grocery stores and these larger establishments to kind of find out what their intent is going to be in regards to opening up a back door like it used to be at the grocery stores when I was young?
We haven't had any of those discussions with them. I'm sure they've had plenty of internal ones and with CalRecycle. And just to kind of give you some oversight, so, CalRecycle requires that a recycling, if there's not a recycling center within their zone, it's like a half-mile zone around the retailer of a certain volume, that the store that sold, that sells goods has to take them back. So, you have Walmarts and Costcos, there's no recycling center in that zone. So, by law, they have to take those recycles back, and you get your deposit back from them. What was in past was those stores could buy out of that requirement. They don't wanna do it, they don't want the mess, they don't wanna, so they could pay $100 a day to buy out, and they're no longer required to take it back. That buyout option is what is going away in January, so they will be forced to take those cans, bottles of their recycles back through their door if there's no recycling center. So, it's something they should have been doing all along. Many of, many of them have just either bought out or just avoided it, not, not done either. I can't really speak to what they've been doing, but it's something that's still been in occurrence. But I remember taking the bottles back myself, so.
Can they subcontract? Could they, could they hire a recycling company to establish a recycling center between Costco and Walmart? Or what we're, or are what we doing tonight prohibiting that?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Correct, yeah, we, this would prohibit that from occurring. It doesn't prohibit them from taking the cans in their store. I think if they were gonna modify a separate entrance or something like that, and that's not their primary use, it's, you know, still 800,000 square feet of Costco and just a little 500 square foot inside the building is taking cans, I think we would, this ordinance would not apply specifically to that, it'd just kind of be accessory use.
That's some expensive square footage to receive cans.
Any other comments or questions?
Can we ask questions again to the, the public speakers? I just have a question about timeline.
Sorry, can we open the public hearing?
Thank you. Public hearing is open.
Okay. J.C., what is your current timeline in your mind for the, the new grant?
So, we're supposed to find out this month. A lot of other recyclers and people we have talked to and been in connection with have already received their denials. So, we're really hopeful, and we actually also submitted a model to revamp our current Citrus Heights one that we honestly don't ever want to go away. If you guys would believe it, we redeemed 1.5 million containers last month alone. And so, it's been a great business. We've made amazing friends, neighbors are friends. But, we find out this month about the bag drop model, and once the funding is exhausted for, they call it rank one. So, once the funding has been exhausted for that, they'll move on to rank two and three. And since our model to revamp the Citrus Heights with like a, I sent pictures, I should have uploaded them, but it's pretty much a container still, but it's beautiful. It utilizes RVMs, it will also have a bag drop model, and all material is stored within the containers. It's like lightly compacted to allow for that. So, you won't see like our 50 bags that are stacked hanging out on the side during operating hours until Ivan pulls up with the truck. But, they did kind of like a lottery for that one, and so there were only five, five available. And they did like, kind of like a bingo drawing, it was a little weird, but we sadly pulled the number five ball. So, we're not too hopeful that we'll end up with that. I think the funding may be exhausted, but they do have another round coming out that we're hopeful to get it and then have a beautiful center at Summer Hill Plaza. So, we would never wanna substitute, like, we wouldn't want to leave Summer Hill Plaza with our traditional model for a bag drop because it will just never compare the volume. But, we, we will find about, out about the bag drop this month and definitely let you guys know.
Okay, I'm curious, just realistically, when do you think you would be opening that if it were unrestricted?
The goal is January, so like if you guys did put a 12 or 18th month ban, it would almost dissolve the ability to implement that. Unless, I don't know how it works, I don't know if it can be amended in four months or, or how that would work, but yeah.
Okay.
We would find out this month.
Okay, and then, I've been hearing a lot about the technology. Is it available now, or will it be for January?
We're actually traveling to Canada next month to, I'm sorry, next week, to tour similar centers to what we're doing in Fair Oaks. So, in Canada, they're all like depot centers. So, you go inside, you dump your bag of mixed material in the hopper, and the technology sorts and counts it for you, so you actually get your one-for-one count back. It's also a common model in Connecticut, Oregon, New York. But, for some reason, here in California, we're still in a container. And then, in Oregon, you know, most grocery stores have RVMs, so you like put your bottle in one at a time, that's even including Germany. A lot of places utilize that, so I do see changes for California. I just think they're gonna just take a little bit of time, and the bag drop model is kind of like step number one. The indoor center is gonna be amazing, but again, it's not possible without grant funding, so.
Okay, and then, do you have a location in mind for this new model?
For the bag drop?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, the goal was to put it, so we recently actually, I wanna say it was like last year, we applied to open like a traditional center at this shopping center, the Food Max on Sunrise and.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. And the permit did get approved, but then while it was in public comment, we got a lot of emails saying that they would rather not have the center open, so it ended up getting denied. And, well, we had the option to come see you guys, but we were scared, so. So, yeah, so it got denied, so even with there not being a ban now, I feel like there's still, by not doing a ban, you guys still give yourselves the ability to receive the funding from CalRecycle, but also, you could just make tweaks to like the operational guidelines that this, 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 I mean, we tried to open one with the permit, permit process and still got denied. So, I don't think a ban is necessary to avoid more centers, but. But anyways, so the bag drop would be at that same shopping center.
I see, okay. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you.
I guess I would encourage you to take, when you're, take videos of the technology that you see so you're able to bring those back, you know, when we maybe consider this again.
Any other public comment?
No additional.
Again, closed public hearing. I feel as if I can ask for a motion. Seeing no objections to that, I call for a motion.
You want it in the form of a motion? You do. I'll move that we make a recommendation to the city council to ban any further, any new recycling centers for a period of time to be determined until the city can reconsider perhaps new technology that is, new technology that addresses the concerns of the existing technology.
Commissioner Sheila, I'd recommend the motions on the screen if you could. Your, your commentary.
You don't like my com, you don't like my motion?
Your commentary is noted, and your sentiments, we hear you.
I thought it sounded pretty good, too. Okay. Recommend to the city council adopt a resolution to find the proposed amendments are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, under section 15061B3 of the SEQA guidelines. You want two motions? Give me a second.
We can do them individually or?
You can read both.
Recommend the city council adopt an ordinance amending chapter 106 of the City of Citrus Heights Municipal Code, zoning code section as shown in exhibit A.
And as amended.
If you could just add "as amended," that would capture the.
As amended.
Thank you.
Do I have a second?
I would just like a clarification. Is the second motion then inclusive of the issue that we're speaking about, the recycling as well?
Correct.
They're not individuals, okay. Is there a way to separate them, where we can approve and the changes to the general plan without this particular one?
If that's the, the will of the commission, we can do that. I would maybe recommend that we start with motion one, which is just related to SEQA, and then maybe discuss amongst yourselves how you want to do that, and we'll see if there's a majority that wants to go one way or the other.
Quick clarification, we said "as amended." What amendments did we, is that?
That was to accommodate the revisions that were at your chair. There were some grammatical errors, and we put them at your chair, and so I just wanted to make sure those were captured.
Okay, just grammatical, gotcha, yeah.
Forgive me, commission, you also have the option to approve the changes outside of just the recycling altogether as well?
Right, that's what I was referring to, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I had a motion that was made by Commissioner Sheila for the whole thing. What I'm understanding is that we can accept his motion with the removal of the recycling portion, is that what I'm hearing?
I think first, let's maybe make motion one.
Okay.
And then, I would recommend the commission talk amongst yourselves to see if there is support for that motion to take out a provision or not, and then we'll see where it lands.
I sec, oh, go ahead.
Do we need to address the motion I made?
I think I'd recommend that you would say.
Withdraw my motion?
Withdraw your motion and motion, move motion one at this time.
Okay. Motion one, recommend the city council adopt a resolution to find the proposed amendments are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, under section 15061B3 of the SEQA guidelines.
Yes, second. I have a motion made by Commissioner Sheila, seconded by Commissioner Flowers to accept motion one. I'm gonna call for the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. And then I ask for a discussion on motion two?
Yeah, or, I mean, or you could make a motion and see if you get a second or, or not. That might be the best way, or you can discuss it in advance.
Then I open the floor for a motion.
Recommend the city council adopt an ordinance amending chapter 106 of the City of Citrus Heights Municipal Code, zoning code section as shown in exhibit A, as amended.
Second.
Forgive me, I would be a little more specific on what you're amending. I would be more specific on what you're amending. Just the grammar? Oh, the whole thing, forgive me.
I think, just confirming, as amended with the grammar, not related to the recycling discussion. Sorry, let me start over.
As amended, not including the section relating to the recycling center.
Thank you, forgive me.
I have a motion on the table made by Commissioner Sheila. It has been seconded by Commissioner Rimmick. I'm gonna call for any discussion. Call for the vote.
I do have a question on that. What he's removing, does, is it actually have a ordinance number pertaining to it that we could state in there, is it just, is what he stated enough, that we're removing the recycling?
So, okay, I think there might be some confusion, let's start over again. So, what I think Commissioner Sheila said in your packet tonight on your desk was a amended recommendation that included grammatical changes. I think what I heard Commissioner Sheila say was, that's what he was recommending that was approved as was on your desk. Commissioner Sheila is, am I capturing that correctly? Okay, so, if you'd like to go with what was on your desk, someone seconds it, and we, you take a vote. If you'd like to do something different, that's up to you.
His motion included the recyclings as presented.
And that was seconded by Commissioner Rimmick.
You can propose an alternate motion. Yeah, I'd like to propose an alter, an alternate motion. I'd like to recommend that we approve the ordinances.
Sorry, forgive me, before you begin.
It's okay, yes.
I, take a roll call on that first motion, first, Commissioner Sheila's motion that was seconded. I would take a, I would take a vote on that before you provide an alternate motion.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table made by Commissioner Sheila, seconded by Commissioner Rimmick. I will call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. I will entertain any alternate motions.
Okay, I'll make it. I recommend that we do approve all that's been presented in the motion two there, the ordinance amending chapter 106 of the City of Citrus Heights, with the exception of the recycling piece. Is that okay for, okay?
I'll second that motion. I have a motion on the table made by Commissioner Flowers. It has been seconded by Chair Price. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 No.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
So, we had Sheila as a no and Shisco as a no, is that correct?
Yes.
I need clarification, though. So, are we going back to the recycling, or is that off? We're not talking about it anymore?
I think that would be up for a third motion, is that correct?
Well, it's kind of tonight, either you move it on or, or we, it stays, yeah. It stays as is.
Okay, I made my vote, because I was confused, so I'm a no also.
I would like to hear what Commissioner Flowers' issue is with the, with the recycling, in or out. I, I'm trying to, I, I'm not understanding what we're doing here.
Well, I believe that we're making a recommendation that the, that the ordinance is put into place, that there are no additional recycling centers brought in, am I correct? Okay, and we're also, that would also put a ban on further developing the current ones as they are right now, correct? Okay, and I'm against that, so I don't want to put that motion recommended or recommend that to city council at this point. So, I would, I would imagine that saying no to that is going to remove that particular recommendation from going forward to city council at this time, is that correct?
We would share your comments. The whole thing would still go to the council, but we would share your comments in a summary form that they would consider.
And just to add some more comment from my, I would agree that I don't support the restrictions on recycling. I understand where that's coming from, it's very, there's good intentions around that, that makes sense. But, I, I see that as stifling. But, uh, I, I see that as stifling some of the innovation that we've heard about, so, um, I, I don't support that. And then some of the, um, other things, I just, I think I need to sit down, uh, maybe with Stephanie or someone to understand some more of the other texts that was changed. So I don't fully understand some of these, uh, other changes, so that's why my vote for now is no, so.
I still have a motion on the table that has been seconded, or did we cast a vote? I'm a little confused now, folks.
You have cast a vote.
Okay, and so Rimmick's vote cannot be amended as he requested?
No.
And if my count is correct, then that motion passed, correct?
So if my, I was misunderstanding something, so my vote needs to be changed. Because my vote is not accurate. I was completely in left field with my vote.
I think we can, can do a-
I need to amend my vote.
Can we request a revote?
I was, I thought I was voting for one thing and I wasn't voting for that.
I, I think we can, um, go ahead and make the motion again and, and second, and then how about this time we do a roll call vote, just to make sure we're all squared away?
I like this plan.
All right, shall I make a motion once again?
Please.
All right. I motion that we recommend the city council adopt an ordinance amending chapter 106 of the City of Citrus Heights Municipal Code, zoning code section as shown in exhibit A with exclusion of the ordinance as it pertains to the recycling measure.
I will still second that emotion. And then we're gonna call for a roll call vote.
Okay. Chair Price?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Rimmick?
No.
Commissioner Nelson?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheila?
No.
Commissioner Shishko?
Uh, no.
Commissioner Flowers?
Aye.
Commissioner Van Duker?
Aye.
So we have four As and three Noes, so...
Motion passes. Any determination made by the planning commission may be appealed to the city council by filing a written notice of appeal and the appropriate filing fees, $250, with the city clerk not later than 10 calendar days after the date on which the determination is made. All right, next item.
We have items five B and five C. Those two items have been continued to September 24th. So our next item is going to be the correspondence, um, general correspondence, presentations, and reports from city staff, and that is a SEQA refresh, refresher. Allison?
Oh, excited. I put this on the agenda because I thought it was gonna be a light topic. Um, so this is a SEQA review, um, our famous word of SEQA, S-E-Q-A, SEQA. Uh, just to, we haven't talked about it in a while. We haven't had a lot of projects, uh, that have dealt with SEQA. And so there's some coming up on the agenda in the future where this will play a role in the discussion, so I just wanted to kinda give an overview and a refresher. Uh, so what is that SEQA word that we always say? It stands for California Environmental Quality Act. It's a statute that, um, is in the legislature, the Public Resources Code, it's been around since 1970. Um, and it really is the way that we assess environmental impacts of proposed projects, um, before they're approved. So it's a way to get the environmental assessment of a project out into the public realm for the public to review, um, before the project is approved. And Casey snuck in this lovely chart here on the right, just to kinda scare us all that, but this is what we do. We have a project that's going through SEQA. It's a lot of if this, then that, if no, then this, if yes, then that, uh, but that's just kind of a flow chart, um, to scare us. But that is kind of the SEQA process in a flow. So what is the purpose of SEQA? It really is the way that we identify environmental effects of a project. It provides information to us as a public agency and as us as a public, uh, person, as a community member, to learn about a project and its environmental effects, and its ways that that information is shared to both the agency and the public, and identifies ways, uh, for any impacts identified through that review process to avoid. I mean, that's the goal, is to avoid any environmental impacts or effects from a project. And then identify alternatives. If the project's gonna do this, then what can we do to avoid that? Which is the ultimate goal, is to avoid, um, identify alternatives that would avoid those impacts. So it's kind of the overall, in a very simple form, uh, what SEQA does. Through most processes, there's always exemptions, so there's two main exemptions for a project that, so it doesn't have to go through SEQA. Um, one, we have statutory exemptions, so those come in the play of like a building permit or the issuance of a business license. They're not required to go through environmental review as in the statute allows them to, uh, not be reviewed by SEQA, thank goodness. And then, um, the categorical, categorical exemptions are the ones that you probably most see when you get staff reports and projects. Categorical exemptions are stuff that the statute identifies as, in most occasions, when you're doing this, it's exempt from SEQA, there's no effects. There's always some little caveats, but they're kind of categories that, of types of projects that can go through review, be reviewed for a project, and not go through the SEQA analysis. Here's a list of some of the most common ones. Uh, on this list, we see the 15332 quite often on your staff reports. That's an infill exemption, meaning that if this project is occurring on a site, um, in a community that's built, it has utility services around, it has access to, uh, those services, the site's less than five acres, then qualifications like that, then it would be exempt from SEQA. Minor land divisions, you see that on parcel maps that come through, uh, they're exempt from SEQA. And then we have existing facilities is another one that we see, and that's the reuse or reconveyance of a building that, into something different. Uh, those are categorical exemptions through SEQA. If the project does not, um, have a statutory exemption or a categorical exemption, then it must go through an impact analysis, and what we call an initial study. And this reviews the project to make some, uh, conclusions upfront that would determine the in-depth SEQA process required. So initial study is the first step, um, on a project if it's not having exemption. We would look at the setting for the project, where it's located, you know, the physical environment, um, around the project. What's, what's the impact of that project? Um, they use the term significant, or threshold of significance. What is the sign- threshold of significance if that project is built? And what are some mitigations? Should that project be built and there be impacts, what are some mitigation measures? And then really, the, uh, the initial, uh, study has a conclusion saying, based upon all these factors, here is what needs to happen. So that's the first step, um, in doing a project that does not have an exemption, is this performing this initial study analysis. Mitigation can come in the form of many, um, many types of efforts. Really, avoidance, um, could be the number one measure. If you're going to build this project and there is a seasonal stream going across the site, so your project is gonna impact that, then well, let's just avoid it, stay away, stay far away from it, not change the channel, not change the stream, that's an avoidance mitigation measure. We could make efforts to minimize the impact, um, that impact that's identified. You know, what are some measures that we could do that would minimize how it's impacted? Uh, we could repair, restore any impacts that might occur. We could reduce the impact over time by preserving maintenance during the project, so we could set up maintenance, uh, routines. Let's say it's trees or something like that, they're gonna be impacted. Maybe there is a maintenance plan in place or some sort of measures for the trees to protect them over time. So there's a variety of things that can be used for mitigation, and all that is reviewed, um, when a project is analyzed. And depending on what those mitigations are, determines the type of environmental document that has to be, uh, completed for the project. Uh, so a negative declaration, that means that there was no significant impact shown in the initial study. We did the initial study, there was no impacts, everything was avoided, no sensitive areas, so a negative declaration would be the appropriate SEQA document. Impacts, there were impacts identified in the analysis, but they could all be mitigated to that threshold, less than significant. So, but there is mitigation measures. Um, the sidewalk is gonna, is gonna meander around the trees instead of removing the trees, or the, a house is gonna move 50 feet away from the creek. Um, so they're all types of mitigation measures, so that would be what we call a mitigated negative declaration. And just for reference, we can say MND. Um, and then larger projects, um, I don't have too many of these, thank goodness anymore, but at one time we did, but it required an EIR, and that's that very large document that means that there was impacts identified, but they can't be mitigated to that less than significant impact. So there has to be further analysis, uh, to get that information out to the agency and then to the public. Uh, so EIRs are done for very large projects, um, like when City Hall was built, Stock Ranch Shopping Center was built. Um, those type of projects require that EIR. So we do document that SEQA process, um, to establish the factual basis for the analysis, and we pa- repair those findings that are in those documents. Uh, we do make the document available for public review. They have guidelines, requirements that we have to release them to the public, to give them time to review the document and submit any comments. Uh, so they are, they go out to the public. Uh, the review authority, you're provided those documents as well, um, and you have the authority then to adopt, uh, those documents. And then after the project is approved, or whatever action is taken, we do have to notify the state agencies and the state, and then record that document with the county clerk. So there are steps following the approval of a project that we have to take that puts out that notice of what action was taken on that SEQA document. So there's a notice of exemption, so if a project that we reviewed and you approved had that exemption, it was exempt from SEQA, we still have to file that notice of exemption with the county and the state to let them know. And then if it had a negative declaration or a mitigated negative declaration, we file the notice of determination with both those same agencies, so they understand the process. When we post those documents for review, all the state agencies look at them too, to make sure that their resources are not being impacted. Um, let's say it's, you know, a creek or something like that, water resources board, a fishing game may wanna review the document, uh, for their input, um, on their resources. And really, I just wanted to give a, kind of a highlight of, this is a very large, complex process, and certainly is not my area of expertise, and so this is a work that's usually performed by an outside consultant. Uh, the city has a list of environmental consultants that we work with, uh, that we are in contract with, so should we have a project that comes through, we, um, have one of those consultants take that job, you know, or consult with them to work the project and provide all this documentation to make sure that we're following all the legal requirements. They do the in-depth analysis, um, for that project. It is a, the consultants are hired, um, through the city from our list of consultants that we have vetted. But the applicant does pay for that cost, so we're not paying their fees, that is paid by the applicant. So that really creates that separation between the developer and the city, that's an outside, you know, unbiased person, uh, that keeps that separation. Yes.
So the applicant can't hire their own?
They cannot. Yeah, it's something we would hire. That does really keep the independent review, the review of the project independent, separate. Um, so just to give you an idea, um, of that cost of that effort, um, so we try to use exemptions whenever we can, obviously, for many reasons. It creates a quicker project, easier review, but should there be no exemptions and they have to go through the process, this is what a development project is up against. Uh, but let's say if they have to do a mitigated negative declaration, to prepare that initial study, really to see what happened, what SEQA documents needed, that's gonna take about two to four weeks. That's usually gonna come up with, um, come back with some results saying, well, you need to do a cultural study. You need to have someone come out and test the soils to see what kind of, uh, soil is there. You need to do a bio study because there's a creek there. We need to look at the plant species or any other, um, protected plants or animals that might be in the area. All those special studies, um, come out of that initial study, so those add time and cost. Once the document is done, we, we do release it for public review for, um, some are 20 days and 30 days, so it just depends, so that adds time. So overall, you're looking at a few weeks to generally three to more months, uh, to process an environmental document, and the costs are looking at $30,000 and up. So it's not a, um, feat that, you know, we like to have an applicant have to go down because of the time, but it is something that's required, and we take that work, um, very seriously. Uh, we wanna stay in compliance with law, protect the environment. But I just wanted to give you an overview of what that, um, process looks like. I think that's it.
A quick question.
Yes.
Do you have an example over the last many years of something that has happened in the city that required this to occur?
Yeah, we do have done quite a few. Negative declarations is probably, we, exemptions are probably our most common. Uh, but negative declarations, we've done some for, um...
I'm trying to think of-
Was it Mitchell? What was Mitchell?
Mitchell Farms was an EIR.
Mitchell Farms was an EIR.
Sunrise Tomorrow was an EIR, um, which is rare to have two that close together, it was just that, it's happenstance.
Is that because of the size of those projects?
And the, and there was impacts, right, so they had to be mitigated out, and there was some that couldn't be mitigated to a less than significant, the threshold was more than less than significant. So an EIR. The Calvary Center, um, when it originally started expanding, that was a, uh, negative declaration.
Pioneer Baptist Church.
Pioneer Baptist Church because it was the, along the creek, so it required some cultural studies and bio studies because of the creek, uh, so that was a negative deck.
We do try to steer towards the exemptions wherever we can, but if, that's not carte blanche, if there's a creek or we know there's a wetland there, you kinda get out of that, that approach, and you have to go the more complicated approach, so we try to go the cheaper, easier route for everyone's sanity, but sometimes it just doesn't work.
So I just wanted to give you an overview of that, um, very low-tech explanation of SEQA. As I mentioned, the projects that you have coming that were on tonight's agenda, that will be on the next, or the September agenda, the parcel maps, uh, you will see, um, mitigated negative declaration, um, in that project. And so just to give you some history of why it's there, and, um, the public review portion that was released and comments received on that mitigated neg- declaration will be part of your packet when that comes to you. Alrighty, well, thank you.
Next item.
Adjournment.
727, meeting adjourned. Thank you.